Hello and welcome to an evening with the candidates for College of Marin Board of Trustees, Areas Two and Seven. I am Anne Wakely. I am Board Secretary for the League of Women Voters of Marin County, and we are bringing you this candidate forum in partnership with the Emeritus Students of the College of Marin, SCOM, Marin Promise Partnership, and Canal Alliance. And we are very pleased to be able to provide Spanish language interpretation for this forum. And now our interpreter, Berta Campos, will tell you how you can listen to the forum in Spanish.
Hola y bienvenidos al foro de esta noche que presenta los candidatos que se postulan para la junta del colegio de marín, Junta Directiva. Este foro se presenta en inglés con interpretación simultánea en español. Si desea escuchar el foro en español, haga clic en el icono del globo de interpretación en la parte inferior de su pantalla. Si está en un dispositivo inteligente como un celular o tableta, o si no ve el globo, busque el menú de tres puntitos y elija Interpretación de Idiomas. Luego seleccione español. Finalmente, todos por favor pongan en silencio el audio original. Esta opción la pueden encontrar en el mismo menú del icono del globo. Haga clic en Silenciar el audio original para poder escuchar solo en español y no los dos idiomas al mismo tiempo. Gracias.
Thank you, Berta. So bear with us a moment while we set up our Spanish audio. Okay, wonderful. Before we begin, I want to thank everyone who submitted questions for the candidates. Now I am delighted to introduce Sarah Seichik Sebastian, who from Marin Promise Partnership, who is going to open our forum.
Good evening. Buenas noches, everyone, and thank you for joining us for this candidate forum, featuring candidates for the College of Marin Board of Trustees, Areas Two and Seven. My name is Sarah Seichik Sebastian, and I serve as the Chief of Staff for Marin Promise Partnership. It is my pleasure to be with you all this evening. Thank you to the League of Women Voters of Marin County for organizing and moderating this evening's important event. Marin Promise Partnership is pleased to be co-hosting this event in partnership with Canal Alliance and SCOM. Together, we are committed to promoting educational excellence and equity throughout Marin County, including at College of Marin, which plays a pivotal role in our shared vision. As Marin's community college, College of Marin is a gateway to higher education and economic mobility for many of our students, especially those from historically underserved communities. For nearly 100 years, it has been provided, it has provided accessible and affordable educational opportunities, ensuring that students from all backgrounds have a pathway to success. The leadership of the Board of Trustees is critical in shaping policies and programs that support educational equity and remove barriers to opportunity. This is why tonight's forum is so important. It gives voters a chance to hear directly from the candidates, who will help shape the future of College of Marin and by extension, our entire community. We are delighted to be part of this forum to ensure that voters, who also play a role, have an opportunity to make an informed decision on who will represent them. Thank you all for being here. And now I'm pleased to turn this over to this evening's moderator, Sue Ream. Thank you so much.
Good evening and welcome to this candidate forum presented by the League of Women Voters of Marin County, SCOM, Canal Alliance, and Marin Promise. I am Sue Ream, your moderator for this evening. With me are League members Elaine Bianini, our timekeeper, Stacy Edmonds, who is providing Zoom support, and Anne Wakely, our question sorter. Berta Campos is providing Spanish language interpretation. A little background before we start this evening. The Marin Community College District Board of Trustees has changed the way that their Board of Trustee members are elected. Previously, board members were elected at large, where each member was elected by voters throughout the county. Under the new system, the board members will be elected by trustee area. They will be required to live in the area they represent and will be elected only by those registered voters of that area. There are seven distinct trustee areas, one for each board seat. Tonight, we will be hearing from four candidates running for two seats in two areas. Area Two, which represents North and Northwest Santa Fel and Terolinda, and Area Seven, which represents West Nevada and West Marin. The Board of Trustees governs on behalf of the Marin Community College District, representing the public's interest in establishing policies, hiring and evaluating the president, assuring fiscal health and stability, and monitoring the institutional performance. The Marin League of Women Voters is a trusted, nonpartisan member organization that encourages informed and active participation in government. We promote voter education and advocate for issues. We never endorse or oppose candidates or political parties. Moderating candidate forums is an important part of our work. This evening's forum is being recorded and will be available at our website, MarinLWV.org. All right, now on to the forum. There are four candidates running in two, in each area. The candidates for Area Two are Crystal Martinez and Mila Schechter. The candidates for Area Seven are Stephanie O'Brien and Ross Millerick. All the candidates have agreed to the guidelines and time limits for the forum. Each candidate is invited to make a two-minute opening statement, and after that, they will have one minute to answer my questions. And to be fair, I will rotate that in order. So for opening statements this evening, I'd like to start with Crystal.
Good evening and thank you to the League of Women Voters and SCOM, Canal Alliance, and Marin Promise Partnership for the opportunity to speak with you this evening. I'm Crystal Martinez, and I am running for the Marin Community College District Trustee, Area Two. For two decades, I have proudly called San Rafael home, where my husband and I are raising our teenage son. My dedication to this community and its future fuels my work every day. As a local public servant with the County of Marin, I have gained valuable experience in collaborating with the community and navigating government systems to achieve positive outcomes. I am adept at problem solving and committed to transparent communication. My work with the county and the College of Marin is driven by my passion for making a local impact, and I am eager to continue advocating for Marin County's educational needs. My qualifications are deeply rooted in my extensive community engagement and advocacy. As a former commissioner and Chair of the Marin Women's Commission, a dedicated volunteer with multiple organizations, including Marin Court-appointed special advocates, and the Museum for the American Indian and Junior Giants at Pickleweed Park, I have actively worked to create a more equitable and inclusive community. As a current College of Marin trustee appointed in July of 2023, I have prioritized student needs in every decision that I make. My belief in the transformative power of education is deeply personal. Community college played a pivotal role in my educational journey, allowing me to balance family and work while furthering my education and laying the foundation for my career. I am proud to hold a bachelor's in business administration and a master's in science and business analytics, and I am passionate about paying this forward to help future generations thrive through education. During my tenure on the College of Marin Board, I have actively pursued community college-specific competencies to ensure that I was well-prepared from the outset, and I've participated in specialized training sessions offered by the Community College League of California. In addition, I've participated in the selection process for our current Marin-
Crystal, thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Run out of time. All right, moving on to Ross. Don't forget to unmute yourself, just like me.
Thank you to the League of Women Voters. I have extensive experience in both the College of Marin and Nevada School Community. The transition to trustee area elections allows for more focused approach to the college and student issues. I first got involved with the College of Marin 30 years ago through the Digital Village Comm partnership. Over the years, I have been part of two bond campaign committees and have also served as the co-chair of two bond oversight committees. These bonds have contributed a total of $514 million to the modernization of the College of Marin and IBC, which involves the construction of the Jonas Center and Milwauk Olympic Pool Facility on the IBC campus. Located in our backyard, the Indian Valley Campus should be expanded to service for everyone. These should include, one, the use of IBC to better address diverse educational needs such as academic vocational, academic skills, vocational skills, and the community enrichment, and bring together a four-year academic transfer program with classes on the IBC campus. Last Friday, the Nevada Unified School District and the College of Marin hosted a College-to-Career Education Day at Indian Valley Campus. 500 Nevada eighth-grade students participated in learning about the educational opportunities in the Indian Valley Campus's college offerings, and maybe they'll they'll end up going there as college students. For 33 years, I have led the Nevada K-12 School District, ensuring its financial stability. Now, the Nevada community is encouraging me to run for the College of Marin Board. I aim to help bring the Indian Valley Campus up to the standards, the high standards of the College of Marin in areas of academic, career technical education, community classes, and high school partnerships. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. All right, Stephanie.
All right. Thank you so much. Thank you for this opportunity to speak to the voters of West Marin and West Nevada. I've served on the College of Marin Board since 2011. I'm very proud of the accomplishments I've achieved during my tenure and how the college has positively impacted so many students and our community. I've lived in West Marin for almost 28 years, where I raised my son. He graduated from College of Marin in 2020, and then from UC Boulder in 2022. I first got involved in public service as an appointed trustee to the Loganita School Board in 2001, and served there until 2011. For the past 22 years, my profession has been in the California community college environment, making certain that taxpayers' investments in our facilities are managed effectively. We are doing so much for the community in both portions of my area. In Bolinas, the Marin Field Station will be opened shortly, one of only two such facilities in the state. In Nevada, the ongoing transformation of the IBC campus over the past 13 years has been remarkable. We have focused a great deal of attention on furthering career tech programs, as well as establishing more programs for Nevada students, such as dual enrollment, campus, and middle college, to make sure that transition is more seamless. But there's much more to do. I have received enthusiastic endorsement from both supervisors, Lucan and Redoni, recognizing the stewardship and commitment that I bring to this role. Congressman Jared Huffman, the Marin Democratic Party, Marin Women's Political Action Committee, and several other prominent organizations and individuals have endorsed my reelection. Thank you again for this opportunity to answer your questions.
Thank you. And lastly, Mila.
Okay. First of all, thank you so much for providing me an opportunity to appeal directly to my voters and to tell a few words about myself, my background. I was graduated, and I get a Master of Science degree in physical chemistry. For several years, I had been lecturing general and physical chemistry in a polytechnic institute and in the university, in the former Soviet Union. Afterwards, I moved to Israel and I continued my work at Ben Gurion University of the Negev. I devoted my life to environmental studies, mainly in hydrochemistry. I managed many projects devoted to pollution, water pollution. And as a trustee, I guess, I put design and implement efforts in a supportive, innovative learning environment that promotes social, racial, and environmental justice. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Now we're going to move on to the questions. Everybody ready? Okay, so this is a reminder, I'm going to read the question, and if it becomes your turn and you want me to restate it, I'll be more than happy to do that. And I'm going to read the question first. Number one, what do you view as the role and key responsibilities of the College of Marin Board of Trustee? And if elected, how would you help the board fulfill this role effectively? And Mila, I'm going to start with you.
Okay. I suppose that my experience verifies me to oversee College of Marin's operation and improve its course offering. As a College of Marin trustee, I would ensure that students are prepared to thrive in their future. And I would like to implement along with the educational process, participation of students in some research projects.
Thank you. All right, Ross.
Get off mute. Thank you. To me, there's a couple of key issues that a trustee provides. One is to make sure we're focused on the broad community of Marin. That means cultural diversity, which Marin has transformed in the last 20 years. We have a significant issue where we have to make sure that students who come to Marin, starting in kindergarten and finishing at a community college or beyond, have access to the tools they need. Some of those families don't even understand the importance of higher education and how it'll transform their economic lives. That's probably the most important thing. The second most important thing is we do that not just culturally, but we do it physically, widely, so we make sure and serve all of our constituency from Tamaulipas to Sausalito.
Thank you. Stephanie.
Excellent. Well, the role of a trustee in a community college is as a policy and vision representative. We are here to represent the community. We're helped, we are here to establish policy. I've been extremely active over the last 13 years in, on the policy committee and several board committees to make sure that the vision of the board is, and the community is, is being followed. I have completed the Effective Trustee Program and then rose recertified as an Effective Trustee during my last 13 years. I've taken a great deal of leadership roles within the district to make sure that we are achieving as many goals as we possibly can. And I love this work. I've got the energy and vitality and specific commitment to our community to, you know, provide leadership to the institution towards success of all of our students.
Thank you. Crystal.
Yes, as was mentioned previously, we are a policy board, and we do have one employee, which is our superintendent president. And last year, we just hired Dr. Jonathan Eldridge to fill that role, and he's doing an incredible job. I also see us as a conduit to the community, and I think that's where these district seats are vital, in that we have been tasked with making sure that we hear the voices of our community and represent them in our policy decision-making at the board level. We also have a responsibility to the public for strong oversight when it comes to the budget and how the bond money is being spent, because we're accountable to the public and making sure that we deliver on, on what was promised and that we do carry that vision forward. Just a quick plug, we are going to have our centennial in the next couple of years. So you're going to see a lot of visioning efforts coming very soon, and a lot of community voices that we're going to be seeking out. So, yeah.
Thank you. All right, next question. What do you anticipate will be the most important issues that this Board of Trustees will be working on over the next four years? And I'm actually going to throw that back to Crystal again.
Sure. I think I've already touched on a couple of them, but the first is going to be winding down the bond measure spending and making sure that we hit up all the projects that were promised and use any of the residual funds that were held in reserves towards future capital projects to better serve both, well, all three campuses, I'm going to say. And I would say, opening the Learning Resource Center on Kent Field is going to play a critical role in having a student-centered space on the Kent Field Campus. It is a reimagined library. We have the lab that's opening in Bolinas next year. So there's a lot of great opportunities for students to see themselves at College of Marin, and taking advantage of the centennial and being that marketing arm to showcase the amazing number one community college in California as a first-choice option. So that's what we should be doing in the next four years.
Great. Thank you. Stephanie.
Yeah, that's, and Crystal nailed a lot of the things I was going to mention, but, you know, leveraging the final dollars, bond dollars effectively, and making sure that they're used in the most appropriate manner, I think, is, is critical, because these are one-time 30-year monies that the taxpayers of Marin have entrusted us with. I think one of the challenges we are going to be facing is the transitioning to new expectations of students. Students post-COVID are very, very different. We are one of the only colleges in the state that regained our pre-COVID enrollment, which is great, but they're very different students. And so our, the board needs to set in place policies that will help support that transition away from traditional, traditional learning styles.
Thank you. Ross.
I think the most important challenge for the college is to increase enrollment. I think the issues before us, while we've recovered more effectively than other campuses, there's lots of students in Marin County that are not well-served by the community college. In Nevada, many students go to Santa Rosa Community College. College of Marin is, it should be more competitive in offering services to them. Last Friday, we had 800, 500 eighth-grade students on the IBC campus to introduce them to the possibility of a College of Marin career path. The other one is, we need to be able to make sure we're attaching every segment of the population, not just one. There are families who have no college history in their background, and we need to help them make some good choices.
Mila.
In my mind, it would be necessary to oversee College of Marin courses and to focus on professions which could provide students, which would be more applicable in real life, because rather often, I met already students, very good educated in humanitarian languages, excuse me, humanitarian science, and they work in bars, in a completely improper place.
Thank you. All right. Question number three. There is a common perception that community college is a second-tier fallback option. What can be done to dispel this stigma? Mila, I'm going to start with you on that one.
May I skip this question?
Sure. There is a common perception that community college is a second-tier fallback option. What can be done to dispel this stigma?
Again, may I skip this question? At the moment, I don't have a proper answer. I tell straight.
Okay, all right. All right, then we'll move on to Crystal.
Sure. It's actually something I'm really passionate about. I personally started at a four-year university, and like many other 18-year-olds, was not actually sure of the major that I had selected, and community college really gave me the chance to explore and go to work, because I needed to work in order to pay for my education. And I think that in a world right now where we have just mountains, mountains of student debt, myself included, that we should be promoting this as a first-choice option. You can spend two years, have that college experience, and get a fantastic education, and be able to come out of it with little to no debt, with amazing pathways towards UCs and other universities that are built into how we run our school, so that you don't have to finalize your decision by the time you're done with high school. You have more time to grow, to explore what's out there, and to find out what do you want to do next. And I think that community college is perfect for that.
Thank you. Stephanie.
I too attended a community college. I was quite young when I graduated from high school, and it was such a remarkable experience that it has stayed in my, as a passion point for me for my entire adult life. My son had the pleasure of attending College of Marin. He had the attending, or the pleasure of failing his first semester there, and really recognizing what it took to be an effective student. And he graduated from UC Boulder with honors. One of the things I'm so proud about, of College of Marin, is our underserved students have excelled in so many ways. We have the highest transfer rate, one of the highest transfer rates of black men to UC Berkeley of any community college. And the students we do serve, I know we could serve more, absolutely, but the students we do serve are so well-supported in their personal goals, that more students are beginning to recognize, hey, this might be a fantastic thing for me as well. And I believe we have turned that tide myself.
Ross.
The community college system is a primary solution. I did two years at Santa Rosa JC that allowed me the financing to be able to do three years at UC Berkeley and complete a master's degree in Environmental Studies, which allowed me a job at EPA. I have many, many friends where the chance to mature at a community college was absolutely key to the overall life success. We have a world where people are transitioning late in life to second or third careers. This community college system not only provides the four-year path to a master's degree, it also provides the alternative for people to transition career. So I think it's not fair to box community college in as only a career path to four-year. I think they are much more than that, and College of Marin is an excellent example of the success of that program.
Thank you. All right, question number four. What steps will you take to ensure that students from diverse backgrounds feel supported and represented at College of Marin, both in terms of the faculty and the curriculum? And actually, Ross, I'm going to start with you on that one.
Pardon me. Thank you. My phone made a noise. Repeat the question, please. My phone-
Certainly. What steps will you take to ensure that students from diverse backgrounds feel supported and represented at College of Marin, both in terms of the faculty and the curriculum?
So the first thing is, we need to live in a community where people's different lifestyles are considered a value, not an exception or a problem. Marin does a pretty good job of that, but we need to do better. We live in a world where everything from, I lived through the AIDS crisis. I have many friends that went through that process. This, the Bay Area is pretty good at that, but we need to do better, particularly with the transitioning of the population of California with a significant number of Latino families moving into the area. This needs to be a focus on how we do this. And the college needs to provide a door, so students have a chance in a single generation to be able to move to a master's degree level work, as opposed to two or three generations. This is hard work.
Thank you. Mila.
In my mind, first of all, to do everything, to create a very friendly atmosphere for people, for students with completely different backgrounds, this is the first. Second, to find the opportunity to provide for students with a rather weak, if it's possible to say, background, additional classes, maybe one-to-one. This is my point.
Thank you. All right, Crystal.
Sure. Yeah, so- Sure, yeah. So actually, this morning I attended College of Marin's Mental Health Symposium. And we talked a lot about that. What does the experience of belonging look like on our campus? And I think that it's, we can't just look at just our students. We've got to look at our faculty and making sure that everyone feels a sense of belonging. One of the ways in which College of Marin is focused on this with faculty is looking at opportunities to work with other school districts on creating workforce housing, knowing that our faculty deserve to be able to live in the community that they serve if they so choose to. And I think that that's going to, to draw diverse folks and show them that our community values diversity. And our students, making sure that our affinity groups on campus are well-supported and that as trustees, we are showing up in all the spaces to show them that we care, that they are valued, and that as we have curriculum come through our board, that we are always looking at it with that lens. Does it include an equity component? Thank you.
Thank you. All right, and Stephanie?
All right, thank you so much. And it's challenging to follow Crystal because she's been walking in these shoes with me for a, a year and really has done such a remarkable job as a trustee. I had someone actually in Nevada, when I was first running in 2011, tell me college is not for everyone. And what is so key is that a student has a sense of belonging, a staff member has a sense of belonging, that they are valued. And the way the trustees can make this happen is your budget reflects your values. We spend a great deal of time focusing on how can we make sure that everyone feels supported? And, you know, we are an award-winning institution relative to our DEI work, the, the diversity that we hire in staff and faculty and the students that we attract to our college, and I want to continue that work.
Thank you. All right, next up is question number five. In Marin County, we have some of the largest educational achievement and opportunity gaps between students of color and their white classmates. What would be your responsibility as a College of Marin trustee to close these gaps? And if elected, what actions would you take? And Stephanie, I'm actually gonna start with you.
Excellent. Well, that, this great place to start is all, all of our learning committees, communities. These are specific groups that are created to support both underrepresented students, but just students who have specific interests as well. And again, going back to the comment I made earlier, our budget reflects our values and our ability to support those learning communities in a consistent manner is paramount to, to the work we do as trustees. We can only make certain that the institution is following the, the vision and the path that we have laid out. So we will continue that work.
Thank you. Ross?
The key to success at college or any institution is that you feel like it, you're part of the team, you belong, this is your, your place. And that, that, that precedes a whole lot of policies and practices. That has to do with the attitude of the faculty and the attitude of the trustees and the attitude of the president. These are absolutely foundational to making success. This is the work that we've done at Nevada for years, and this is the work that I would continue at the College of Marin. This is a place where students who feel like they got left out or set aside need to be brought in and said, you know, you're one of us, you're, you're going to be successful with all of us together. That kind of work, and it means through clubs and through structures and many other structures. But this, this work has to be personal. This is how people feel about their own personal success.
Thank you. Mila?
I suppose that this problem should be our first priority to, to create an atmosphere and that people of color would feel themselves as a to provide them a feeling of equity and to, to support them to, to achieve their goals. Maybe to, to find additional funds for additional classes for them, as, as I mentioned already.
Thank you. And Crystal?
Yes. So I think we're already addressing this in a variety of ways. You know, over sixty percent of the population of our students are BIPOC students, which is good to, which is good information to have. And it informs how we do decision-making. We can only control what we can control, but if we know that there are gaps within our school systems, then having programs like Compass that are in San Rafael schools that are in the Nevada Unified School District that gets to students as early as middle school and in the high schools. And one, shows them opportunities to take college classes as they're going to high school and to see themselves at College of Marin. They're already being supported while they're in, in their high school systems. And I think doing that shows them pathways to success, even if they haven't seen it necessarily demonstrated in their own home or had firsthand experience. The other thing that I'd like to share is that we have a partnership with Canal Alliance in which we have ESL classes at their new building, and I think it's just that type of creative thinking that will make us continue to be successful.
Okay, thank you. Next question. How do you plan to enhance adult education and career training programs to help connect workers to quality jobs in emerging fields like the green economy? And Crystal, I'm gonna start with you?
Sure. I, that's another, gosh, I'm just so passionate about all the things that we're doing at College of Marin. One of the signature programs that I cannot sing the praises high enough for is our Fire Foundry Program, which is a partnership with Marin County Fire, County of Marin and College of Marin, where we have students learning fire science, working together, living together, and experiencing what it could be like to be in that career pathway. Our marine labs that we're gonna have in Bolinas is gonna show pathways towards green careers. And I think as long as we continue to have community conversations about what are the the work opportunity needs both in Marin and, and nationally, and we can service those locally, we're gonna see partnerships come in, funding come in to create these programs that will get folks into careers immediately.
Thank you. Stephanie?
Yes, excellent. Thank you. And again, following Crystal is very difficult because she takes everything I'm just gonna say. We've done so many things over the last thirteen years to build off of what Crystal was saying. We have a CNA, HHA program now in alignment, partnership with Canal Alliance that puts people into jobs with a living wage, and that is absolutely critical. We've had a construction apprentice program on the IVC campus. We've really been focusing on the IVC campus, you know, on, on career and, and technical education because it has the space to be able to create these very robust programs, which is wonderful. We already have a four-year pathway program with Sonoma State for their BSN program. So we're doing so many things, multiple things to attract. We have thirteen-year-old students, we have ninety-year-old students, and we want to support everyone in making sure that their personal objectives can be achieved.
Thank you. Ross?
Adult education and career paths is a, a, a key component of community colleges. We're not all gonna be PhD researchers that are gonna invent some new chemist, chemical or some new creation. I spent my first course at my community college I took was a three-unit course in truck driving. That got me a living wage that allowed me to pay for my college degree. I am a product of this model. This is, this is exactly how this is supposed to work. So I had a solid, high, high-paid career that worked well. That should be possible for everybody if it's learning to be an electrician or a plumber or an auto mechanic. Or a nurse or a court reporter, all of them to expand.
All right, thank you. Mila?
In my mind, first of all, it's necessary to run a research to, to define what professions are now on, on demand in, in our area. And due to results of this research to, to, to set up courses for people who made up their mind for a second career. And to, to make all efforts for make a curriculum the, the most convenient for people who, for working people.
Thank you. All right, next question. How do you see the College of Marin working with our growing older active population here in Marin? Mila, I'm gonna start with you on that one.
Almost the same, to, to support to support this trend that aging population and now, now like to, 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 to learn to learn subjects that maybe they would like to, to learn at a younger age, but they did not have this opportunity to, to set up again courses in in languages and to maybe to, to run projects which would include courses and excursions and different cultural events as well.
Thank you. Crystal?
Yes, thank you. One, we're the community's college, so you come, you come to us at any age, whether you're looking to do a career change, learn a new language, whatever it is you're looking to do, even if it's being in community, we have something for you there. And it's intergenerational. And that is a wonderful space to be in. How many places can you say that really about? And then we have Escom, one of the contributors here this evening that, you know, Leonard Weingarten's doing a really great job with them. They had a forum last year where they brought in community partners to showcase all of the wonderful resources that are available to our, our aging community. And they have ongoing lecture series and workshops and classes that folks can take part in if they're not looking for a certificate or a formal degree, but want to still participate in that college experience.
Thank you. Stephanie?
Well, as, as one of the aging in, in Marin, I can relate. You know, lifelong learning has always been a part of, integral part of our mission at the college, and we have embraced it and created programs to support the varying objectives that people have when they come back to the college. Again, whether it's a career change or whether it is just curiosity or interest. People like to be engaged. It's been proven that keeping your mind active really helps the overall aging process physically as well as emotionally. And we like to be a very welcoming environment for that. There are a variety of different ways that that is represented on the college, at, at the college. But as Crystal mentioned, Escom is, is really the leader in that for us at the college.
Thank you. Lastly, Ross?
So I think the notion that you do one thing in your life and that's it is, is not true. There are people who want to change careers halfway through their business life or want to do activities after their business life. As was pointed out, we are the community college, but we need to be more than just what the college offers. Escom brings its own programs. Rotary is bringing its own programs onto campus. We need to be a catalyst for all of those activities that the community wants to have as part of their resources, and the college needs to be the physical center for that because we have the facilities that are well situated in the community. So I, I, I think this is, this is part of you belong to us, we belong to you, this is how we live together. We create a rich cultural environment, and you can make choices halfway through your career, halfway through your career where you want to change your, your circumstances, and the College of Marin is gonna be standing by to help you make that life transition whenever that time comes, including supporting outside organizations that work together.
Thank you. All right, next question. Community colleges throughout California have experienced declining enrollment in the last few years. This is projected to continue due to declining birth rate. How do you think the College of Marin should prepare for this decline in student enrollment? And I'm gonna throw that one to you, Ross, to start.
So a whole bunch of the students in Nevada go to the Santa Rosa Community College instead of College of Marin, even though College of Marin is right in their own town. I don't think we have to have declining enrollment. I think what we have to have is a better reach out to our community and make sure they understand the value proposition. The Nevada School District partnered with College of Marin this last Friday and brought eight hundred middle school kids onto campus to let them see the value proposition College of Marin offers. Even with that done, we still may have declining enrollment and, more importantly, transforming enrollment. I think one of the other members talked about stuff getting more and more online. We need to be at the forefront of that process and be able to offer quality programs online and in person.
Mila?
I suppose that one of the ways to help the, to increase enrollment is to, to use all mass media providing detailed information about College of Marin and what it offers for future students. And maybe to, to organize presentations in high schools by representative of College of, of Marin with the same goal to provide as much information as possible about what is College of Marin, what, what its values and so on.
Thank you. Crystal?
Yes, so I, good news is we are back to pre-COVID enrollment numbers, which means we are on the right track. I think that we are going to have to get creative and, you know, as was mentioned, having online offerings, I think, is really important. Having in-person is great. Having the new lab is gonna be fantastic. And I think having satellite opportunities where we meet students where they're at in community is also going to be incredibly important. I know I mentioned earlier about having that satellite location at Canal Alliance's new building, but I think what that does is it's another opportunity to show community what we have to offer. And so if you're taking classes here, you're having a good experience, you feel a sense of belonging. Well, let's take you onto campus and let's see what else you might want to explore and, and take advantage of. And we also need to use opportunities like our Centennial Celebration that's coming up to do a marketing campaign to really showcase what we have to offer to the community. And we have to drive home that this should be a first-choice option.
Thank you. Stephanie?
Darn it, Crystal. All right, everything I just wrote down. All right, so one of the keys is to, to our success is making sure that the, the community really understands the value of the education they receive at the College of Marin. Of course, that's, that is definitely marketing. We are not a revenue limit district. What that means is, is that we are not paid by how many students we are, are serving. It gives us a little bit more freedom to be more creative and address a wider range of student types. We also need to be very focused, and this is what COVID taught, taught us. There are some students who thrive in an online environment. There are some students who thrive in a hybrid environment, and there are some students who thrive in an in-person environment. We need to be able to address all educational modalities successfully.
Thank you. All right, next question. What should College of Marin do to improve mental health resources for students on campus? Especially given the increased stress many students are facing in today's environment? And I'm gonna start with you on that one, Stephanie?
Right, excellent. Thank you. Again, I'll go back to the comment I, I made is that, you know, your budget reflects your values, and this is something that we have been focused on providing not only for our students but for our, our faculty and staff. The last five years have been extremely, four years, have been extremely stressful for everyone. For, across a multitude of, of, of ways. So we have been talking about mental health resources and the learning communities and the, the wraparound services that people need. the learning communities and the the wraparound services that people need in order to just be able to thrive. Our goal is to take away as much stress from them as possible. As a matter of fact, this is one of our initiatives for the the Centennial Campaign is to take away the financial stress and the the need to work for as many students as possible so they can focus on their education, which will help reduce the stress.
Ross.
I I think stress is the primary factor. If you're trying to hold on to day job and go to school and advance your career, you're trying to serve multiple masters. Clearly, this program needs to be part of what the college provides. I I'm not familiar with what they're currently doing, but I know this is in my experience. More students fail for mental fatigue than they do for physical fatigue. This has to be an area that is offered to these young people as or any student who is trying to transition through a hard part of life.
Mila.
I guess that it would be very useful for improvement in men men mental health of students to to set up classes where to teach students some methods for relaxation and and to to invite to run these classes university students, future psychologists. For them, it it would be a good practice and very useful for students, College of Marin.
Thank you. Crystal.
Yes, so as I mentioned earlier, you know, College of Marin had an Equity and Mental Health Symposium today and they'll have it again tomorrow. And this is their third annual event of this type where they bring resources and students and faculty together to have this conversation because mental health and stress is not one size fits all. And so the more informed we are about the needs of our students and faculty, the better we can support. I would say, you know, at a very foundational level, making sure that we're meeting, helping students meet basic needs. And that includes things like our food pantry, which not only supports the students that maybe have food insecurity, but also helps feed families. And that can be incredibly stressful and it's one area of relief that we have to offer. Assisting with finding places to live is another stressor. And really, that's where having workforce housing conversations and being able to help our faculty be able to live where near where they work can allow them to have sorry.
Thank you. All right. Okay, next question. What initiatives would you propose to help make education more affordable for students? Particularly in light of the rising cost of living in Marin County? And Crystal, I'm going to start with you.
Well, I'm going to piggyback off of what Stephanie had mentioned in that that's going to be a key focus. Moving forward with the college is finding ways to make it as cost effective as possible with a fundraising campaign to make sure that folks are not burdened by the cost of tuition. And that's the that's the beauty of community college generally and making sure that our students know what resources are available to them. I think that many students with the right counselor can find a way to take their community college courses at little to no cost. And our hope is to eliminate that cost altogether. But then there are many other costs again that are associated with going to school and that could be the trade off effect of not working. And I know that personally, I went to community college and worked full time while raising my son with my husband. And I tell you what, there's a lot of stress that goes into that. Had I had the opportunity to not have to make that that trade off or and my trade off was sleep, I may have been a much happier person in that moment.
Thank you. All right, next up, Stephanie.
Oh, you keep doing it to me, Sue.
So I'm going to really mix it up next time.
Okay, thank you. So so we are already doing so much. And what one of the things I love about this institution is is we are so open to what other things we can do. A couple of weeks ago, we convened a community partners session at the Jonas, the beautiful Jonas Center, where over 50 organizations were represented, where we were brainstorming on just some of these exact questions. What are some of the things that we can do as an institution to better support the housing? You know, transportation is a huge issue. We're talking to the the transit authorities, workforce housing. We are leading in the county to try to develop more workforce housing amongst educational environments or institutions. We're doing a lot, but we always know we can do more. Hence, the the Centennial Initiative raises as much money as we possibly can, get it into the hands of students so they can thrive.
Thank you. Ross.
So the reducing the cost to get an education isn't just making tuition less. It's the other costs that are ancillary to being able to go to school and spend time doing that. Nevada Unified is one of the leaders where Derek Nell is leading our effort under the superintendent. We have possibly 300 housing units are going to get developed for workforce housing. This has been a multi-decade effort and it's coming to fruition now. The solutions that schools can bring, including the College of Marin, because there's they have some property they could have this and join this conversation and the and the County Office of Education to make it possible to get the cost of living down so people can focus on their education and get through it quicker. You get more value. And then also the inclusion of distance learning, hybrid classes. So maybe they don't have to physically travel for every one of their classes. They can travel for some of their classes and have the college experience. We need to look a multifaceted solution to reduce cost, every possibility.
Thank you. Mila.
To run our wide fundraising campaign to appeal to different institutions and to to do our best to set up more scholarships. This shortly speaking could work.
Thank you. All right, we got two questions to go. Next one is, what are your plans for ensuring that College of Marin continues to be environmentally sustainable? And that campus facilities are upgraded to meet future needs? Mila, I'd like to start with you on that one.
You see, to to give you a proper answer, I needed to 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 come over and to get acquainted with my own eyes. And only afterward, I I would give the the right answer. At the moment, I don't have any ideas, but it is it's not a problem.
Thank you. Crystal.
Yeah, so I think it can happen in a variety of ways. I won't steal Stephanie's thunder on one of the initiatives that that she had actually brought to the college. I'm going to leave that alone. But I do want to talk about how an idea actually just came from students about how we can have native plants on our lawn areas and rethink, you know, green grasses and make sure that we have something that is environmentally sustainable in the long term that's appropriate for each of our campuses. I also did a, we did a tour yesterday of our Kent Field Campus and learned about how well our buildings are functioning. We have solar that's on campus. We are currently thinking about in the long term, how do we want to approach, you know, electrifying our our campuses for cost savings and for environmental sustainability? So I think that at this moment, a lot of things are on the table. As trustees, what we'll have to do is figure out what comes first. And I think we're having that conversation now.
Thank you. Ross.
So environmental improvements on campuses are critical. The college and Nevada School and most schools in Marin County have gone to electrical panels in the parking lots so that they're electrically neutral. So that's been a great benefit. I believe the College of Marin also adopted five years back, maybe 10 years now, a LEED initiative, which basically says buildings have to meet a particular energy efficiency model. And maybe Stephanie has some more detail on that. The 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 issue of how do we use the facilities around us in a more efficient way? And still make them usable is critical. We are going to be facing with increasing temperatures. All the the buildings that didn't require air conditioning 10 years ago require air conditioning today. And it's going to require energy. We need to find solutions to make sure that we're using the campus well. Maybe it's additional shade or irrigation or stuff to use natural tools to control the temperatures on campus. Thanks.
Thank you. Stephanie. Stephanie. She froze up.
Yeah, she's frozen.
She's frozen. Oh, dear. Don't know what to do. That. Don't you hate it when that happens? Oh, she went away. Let's see if she comes right back. And then we will go to the last question. Let's just give it a couple of minutes here. I was afraid that was going to happen to me that the be the night that the the internet decided to stop. It's like, don't do that to me. See if she gets back in.
She just texted me she's lost her internet and I don't know for how long, quite frankly. Sorry.
Oh, dear. What a shame. Okay, all right. Well, we'll move on to the last question here. Oh, maybe she's back. Oh, you're back. Yay.
Yes. My apologies. I'm on my phone. I will see if I can blur my background.
It's okay, you're here. I was going to happen to me, so.
Trying to reconnect and I might jump back on there. Is it my turn to answer?
It is. Would you like me to read the question again?
Oh, no, no, no.
Oh, now we're getting you in two places here.
I'm going to get off my phone.
Okay. Are you okay on the question?
Love technology. Gotta love technology.
Right, right.
This is as as thank you, Crystal, for for holding on to this. This has been one of my focal points for the entire my entire tenure as a trustee. Sustainability in in the true sense, not the greenwash sense, the actual actions that make a difference. I've been driving an electric car for nine years and 13 years before that I had a hybrid. And so I've been personally committed to this. And the college has done so many things. We need to do more. But the investment in the solar installation at IVC, the geothermal system at Kent Field. You know, we actually follow Cal Green, which is slightly different than more rigorous than LEED. But that's something we have to do. But we are focused as an organization on making sure that every investment we make today will be sustainable for the lifetime of the funding source. So anything we're doing with the bond, we should not have to spend more money on that item for 30 years. So that has been an underlying aspect of our relationship to our facilities. And the last thing I want to say is is we have we have some amazing leadership by faculty to make our campuses living classrooms. And I just love that.
Thank you. All right, everybody take a deep breath. We're down to the last question. All right. What do you see as the advantages to starting one's college education at the College of Marin? And I'm going to start with Ross on that one.
So I'm a product of the Santa Rosa JC system. I started my career at a two-year community college. It allowed me to grow up a little bit more. It allowed me to get a job locally. So I was able to save for those two years living at home that had gave me the funds to go through to a master's degree program at Berkeley. I couldn't have afforded that had I not had that opportunity to save for those two years. There just wasn't family funds to do anything other than that. So I think the financial model is extremely important. It was in my case, and I think it is in others. The other is for students who not sure what their career path is, they're going to take a couple of missteps. And those missteps are are stick your toe in the water way less expensive at a community college than they are off at a four-year institution where you're paying housing and tuition and car transportation. So I think they are a huge value that's underrated across the whole educational system.
Okay, Stephanie. You're muted.
Thank you. Something that is attributed to college. We're known as a boomerang school. So so many students go off to four years and oh, I'm going to this is going to be great. And it's a wake up call. My son, you know, spoke to me about this. He said, I really didn't understand what being in college meant until I went through that first semester. So the ability to stay local, to learn what it means to be a college student and to focus on that maturation process is such a wonderful thing. Of course, you don't get it at 18. But I think more parents recognize that it is this is a way, they don't necessarily even have to live at home if parents, you know, are ready for a little quiet time, empty nest time. But it gives the students the ability to to chart their own path and know how to learn with the work with the resources that are available. These classes are 30 maximum students. And you we have PhDs teaching them that it's a very intimate educational environment. And as opposed to going to, you know, a first year class where there are 500 students and you're lost.
Thank you. Mila.
I I suppose that especially in the first semester to focus to to teach our students how how to study, how to what is a proper way to to use different sources, educational sources which College of Marin provides. Not to leave them alone at this such a crucial point of their life. To teach them how to study.
Thank you. Crystal.
Yes. So, you know, when when folks turn 18, there's very different levels of readiness for college. And I think that College of Marin is the best place for each of those levels to thrive. Whether you know that you want to go to that UC, you have two years and a pathway to do that if you so choose. If you want to do career exploration or you want to learn a trade, all of those things are available at College of Marin. We also have that college experience, right? Maybe it's not the drinking in the dorm room, but we have DJs on campus from time to time that our all-student body puts together with amazing fun events. I've seen ice cream trucks and tacos and, I mean, you name it. It is the college experience. And you have an amazing educational experience while you're there and you can save money. Again, I have gone through community college and I've gone through private college to finish out my degrees. And I tell you what, coming out of community college with no debt is a big boon.
Thank you very much. All right, everyone. Thank you all for participating tonight. That really was wonderful. So that concludes the question part of the forum. And before you all have a chance to make your closing statements, I want to share some key election information. So if I could have the first slide. So here are some important dates. Ballots were all mailed to our voters beginning on October 7. And if for some reason you did not receive your ballot, please contact the Marin County Elections Department to help you with that. The official ballot boxes were available on the 8. The last day to register to vote online is October 21. October 26, some of our vote centers are going to be open. That's 11 days before the election. November 2, all of the vote centers are open, which is before Election Day. November 5 is Election Day. It's also your last day to vote. All vote centers are open until 8 o'clock. Mailed ballots must be postmarked by this date and ballot drop boxes are available till 8 p.m. And don't forget, if you drop your mail, your ballot in a box or you put it in the mail to sign your ballot. All right, next slide, please. And we'll let the folks who are viewing in Spanish take a look at that. I'm not going to try to read that. All right, let's go to slide three. All right, so there are many online resources for election information, including the League's website at Marin, MarinLWV.org. Another really helpful resource is Marin Voters Vote 411, an online tool that provides information about what's on your ballot. Candidates are invited to enter their information. And voters can get a personalized list of candidates, including their biographies and top priorities and information about local ballot measures and more in both English and Spanish. Vote 411 replaces Voter's Edge. Again, visit vot11.org. Thank you. We can take slide three down. All right, and now we will go to the closing statements. And I am going to start tonight with Stephanie on that.
Thank you so much. College Marin creates opportunity for so many people. Lives are changed by this work. To watch the faces of students light up with pride when they walk across the stage to receive their certificates or diploma is unequal. Their futures, whether it be directly into the workforce, transferred to a four-year institution or onto a better job are brighter because of College of Marin. By re-electing me, you retain your West Marin representative as well as gaining your West Nevada representative. I have actively represented both areas for the last 13 years and I intend to continue doing so. This is an amazing opportunity for every, for the entire community and I'm happy to serve. I ask for your vote.
Thank you. Crystal.
Thank you. I am deeply committed to ensuring that every student has the opportunity to thrive and that Marin County remains a hub where education flourishes, fostering a path to future success. Together, we can build on nearly a century of College of Marin's legacy, solidifying it, its standing as California's premier community college. I am honored to have the support, the Democratic Central Committee of Marin, Marin County Young Democrats, Marin Women's Political Action Committee, North Bay Labor Council, Marin Professional Firefighters, uh, President Emeritus, Dr. David Wayne Kuhn and the County Office of Education Superintendent John Carroll. I want to thank the League of Women Voters, SCOM Canal Alliance and Marin Promise Partnership for the opportunity to speak with all of you this evening. And I gra- greatly appreciate your time and consideration. And I would of course love your vote before November 5th. Thank you.
Mila.
Uh, first of all, uh, I appreciate the, uh, opportunity which this webinar, uh, gave me. And, uh, uh, I do hope, uh, to be elected. And as a trustee, I could design and implement efforts in a supportive, uh, innovative, uh, learning environment in College of Marin.
Thank you. And Ross, we will end with you. And you're muted.
Thank you. I want to thank the League of Women Voters. I am a product of the Community College System. I earned my Associate of Science from Santa Rosa J C and my Master of Science in Environmental Engineering from UC Berkeley. I was employed as a founding member of the Federal Environmental Protection Agency where I managed water quality projects. I later transitioned to a technology information systems career. I am currently the Director of the Graduate Programs in Computer Management at Golden Gate University. Uh, what do we need to do next? We need to give middle and high school students a clear connection and financial pathway to enrollment in the College of Marin. We need to make the four-year academic transfer program available to all classes at IVC. We need to strengthen the career technical and program at IVC. And we need to offer community satellite education sites to make sure students who are not close to Kent Field can get to the college to get their degrees and earn their, their programs in life. Um, thank you very much for your time and, uh, ru- running this program.
Thank you, candidates. Now I would like to introduce, uh, Gary Gonzer, the President of the SCOM Council, who will provide some closing remarks.
All right. Thank you, Sue. I'm Gary Gonzer. I'm the President of SCOM. It's really been an honor serving as a host partner with the League of Women Voters. So thank you. In closing, I would like to thank the candidates, you all for joining us in this evening's forum. I applaud the work of the League of Women Voters of Marin in creating this evening with our candidates for the College of Marin Board of Trustees. The work of the Board of Trustees is critical in ensuring the continuing success of our College of Marin. And this evening's event has helped us to focus on the issues in front of us and the candidates themselves, which is very important. Thank you all. As President of the Emeritus Students to the College of Marin, I also want to promote another event from the League of Women Voters that focuses on the California propositions of our 2024 election ballot. They can be very confusing. But on this Friday, coming up on October the 18th at 10:00 AM, SCOM will present an online spotlight event that features the League's clear analysis of the pros and the cons of these propositions. The Zoom link to the event is posted on the SCOM website at www.scom.marin.edu. Thank you for attending this event. Thank you also for voting in this very important election.
So thank you so much, Gary, for that. And thank you again, candidates, for participating. Want to thank my League Forum team who was all in the background here, making it happen this evening. SCOM, Canal Alliance and Marin Promise. And a special thank also to Berta, our Spanish language interpreter. A video of tonight's forum will be posted on the League's website in the next couple of days. Thank you again for joining us this evening. And most importantly, thank you for voting. Everyone have a nice evening and good night.